Well, if we're live, I guess we could start a little bit early because we have two guests that would like to address the council and we could take advantage of these three minutes by letting them do that.
You were good and ready to go, sir.
Our Doris Lee, would you like to address the council, please? Doris Lee is one of the candidates for Circuit Judge of Jefferson County. Tim Buckley is also here. He's also a candidate, but they're not competing against each other, so they're friendly. Please go ahead.
Green light.
Oh, thank you. I can't even see the green light. That's how short I am. All right. Well, thank you for having me. As Mayor Evan said, my name is Doris Lee Gilbert. I'm running for Jefferson Circuit Court Judge in Division 10. It will be an open seat next year. It's currently occupied by Judge Angela Bisig, who's running for Supreme Court. I have practiced law for 20 years. Most of that time has been in Louisville and in the Jefferson Circuit Court. But I have civil law experience, criminal law experience, and appellate law experience. Most of my experience is derived from when I was at the Commonwealth Attorney's Office in Louisville for 15 years, where I prosecuted domestic violence, child abuse, and complex felony cases, murders, capital murders, those sorts of things. But I've also done a lot of appellate work, so I've done a lot of writing. I'm a big law nerd, I like to tell folks, so I really enjoy that sort of stuff. But for the last two years, I ran a nonprofit organization, The Mary Byron Project, which provides services to survivors of domestic violence. And I created a program providing legal services to them and training other lawyers to do the same. So my experience is such that I am prepared to take to the bench and to be able to make decisions, to be able to thoughtfully and fairly apply the law and to know where to find it if it's not provided for me. But hopefully, the lawyers doing that will do their jobs. I forgot to say the thing I meant to start with today, and so I'm going to tell you that today is World Down Syndrome Day, if you did not know that. I have a 12-year-old kiddo who has Down Syndrome, and so we're celebrating that today. And I hope that you will take a moment today to just think about what that means. I do think that it is relevant to my run for the bench that I have a kiddo with Down Syndrome because for 12 years I have learned to practice patience that must be very becoming of a judge. Again, my name is Doris Lee Gilbert. I'm running for Jefferson Circuit Court Judge, Division 10, and I would really appreciate your vote on May 17th and would be delighted if you'd tell everyone else you know to vote for me as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Any may have any questions?
Any questions? Now, we'll hear from Mr. Buckley.
Good luck to you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you and good evening. I'd like to thank the Prospect City Council for offering me the opportunity to speak. My name's Tim Buckley. I'm a candidate for Jefferson Circuit Court, Division 9. The role of the courts has been the subject of a lot of debate recently. There's a need to balance public safety with the protection of individual rights. But at its best, our legal system is founded on the principle that everyone is equal before the law. Now, I know this has not always been true in practice, but it's something we must always keep working for. I believe that the courts can provide a fair, neutral, and efficient forum for all people. And I believe that the role of a judge in this process is to ensure that all people are treated with fairness and respect in the course of legal proceedings. Now, there are six people running for this Circuit Court seat in Division 9. It's an open seat. There's currently an incumbent, but someone who will be running in a different division. Now, each of the candidates running bring significant assets to the role. But what I bring is the greatest depth of experience, as well as legal knowledge, temperament, impartiality, and an ability to listen. Specifically, I can point to my 33 years of working at all levels of the courts. During that time, I've worked for many excellent judges, including Herb Mays, Tom Wine, and Bill Knopf. And I've gained a deep understanding of courtroom practices and procedures and an expertise over a wide variety of legal fields. Perhaps as important, I've contributed to the development of the law, writing more than 1,600 opinions for my judges. And over 90 of those opinions are published in the casebooks, meaning that they're cited as precedent in other cases. I can also point to my lifetime commitment to public service and volunteerism. But it's not just my experience that counts. The experience of everyone who comes before the court counts as well. I want to ensure that the public has confidence in our courts and our legal system. So I'm asking for your support, not just for myself, but for a commitment to excellence, justice, and fairness for all people of Jefferson County. Again, thank you for your time, and I ask for your vote for Tim Buckley for Jefferson Circuit Court Judge, Division 9, in the May 17th primary. And if you want to know more about me, I have a website, timbuckleyforjudge.com. Now, does anyone have any questions?
I do have some cards, if you, anyone would like one. Okay.
Good luck to you, too.
Thank you very much.
Come on down.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you both. You didn't have to sit through a long meeting.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Good night. Well, we'll call the official meeting to order. Today is March 21st, 2022. This is the regular meeting, regular monthly meeting of the City Council of the City of Prospect, Kentucky. All six council members are present, so we have a full quorum. And the first order of business on the agenda is to consider moving the minutes of the city council meetings of January 10th as well as February 22nd. If there are any additional, any additions or corrections. If not, as there are motion to approve them.
With the approval of the minutes of the January and February meetings.
Sir, a second.
A second.
All in favor say aye. All opposed, aye, aye, aye. And they're approved. Okay. Mayor's update. First of all, in the US-42 safety study, I've just today received, excuse me, an invitation to a meeting at the KWE, at the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet Offices for this coming Thursday. The invitation says its purpose is to solicit input from the Transportation Cabinet Management and Subject Matter Experts regarding conceptual improvements developed by QK4. And that's all I know about it, but it sounds like it could be important. I checked just after I got in here about 6:30, and it looks like Herb Schulhafer, who's on that working group, also has been invited.
Is it a public meeting or is it a small?
I don't think it is a public meeting. I can check and see. And if it is, I'll let everybody know.
Well, and if it is one we should go to, we're going to need whatever K4 has left to present. Because there are a number of us who haven't seen them.
Mr. Yulesman could provide you with that. I believe Facy's been at all these meetings. That'd be okay?
Sure. Is Herb not here tonight?
I don't see him.
I'll see you.
Yeah, he's there. He's on the top row.
Oh, I'm sorry, Herb. I didn't see you.
Oh, yeah, I see his head.
So, so he's the chair. Would that be okay with you then?
Sure, sure. Okay, next one. Yeah, what?
I was gonna say Tom Springer with QK4 is on and can make a report of where we are.
It's not on the, it's further, further on down. We can do it now. Tom? You gotta unmute.
Sorry about that. Happens to the best of us, I think. I can go now, and I'll be very brief. We had a very productive meeting on Friday. I appreciate everybody making time for that, where we reviewed a lot of preliminary concepts, from lighting to rebuilding the road to other things. And KYTC was at that meeting, and what we agreed to with KYTC is that we would have that meeting with the city and then have almost consider it part two of the meeting with KYTC next week. And I wanted to make sure that the mayor and Herb were invited. It is not a public meeting. It is a working group meeting to make sure that the staff at the cabinet is responsible for the project and for US-42 is aware of what we're looking at and to get their technical feedback. It's a, you know, it's a partnership between the city and the state, and this is, this meeting's part of that partnership. The next move after that, after we receive their comments and whatever that entails, will be to have a more public venue and a meeting with local officials and stakeholders and then the public. So everybody will get a good chance to, to look at and comment on the recommendations or the, I should say, the options that'll help us get to the recommendations. And that'll be in the next month or two.
Any questions for Tom? Thank you, Tom. Okay, continuing. On the Prospect Cove front, the only news to report is that LDG's lawyers have begun noticing the depositions of Prospect officials who were here in 2017, starting with mine a week from Wednesday. Also, there are, will be petitions available at City Hall for those who oppose the new rezoning application for this project. On the Veridian front.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is there any reason why we are not using the same format we used before? In other words, people don't necessarily come into City Hall to sign things. If we made them available through emails and whatnot, I can see them going and getting their next-door neighbors' things. In other words, if our focus is getting a large number of petitions, I think the method that we've chosen is not necessarily going to accomplish that.
Okay, well, we'll pursue that. After the meeting, we'll talk, you and John and I.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Back to the Veridian, a meeting between so-called Develop Louisville and the so-called consulting parties as to historic properties has just been postponed to a date in April. This postponement was in reaction to complaints by Meemun Runyon and other consulting parties, complaints focusing that Metro had not made a written reply to a letter from the State Heritage Properties Office, known by the cute acronym of SHIPO, you gotta be careful, which disagreed with a number of Metro's positions. To my knowledge, nothing else has happened with regard to the Veridian project this month. Finally, I want to say a word about the elections which will happen this coming November. Although the next election is not until November, cutoff date to file to run for office is coming up on June the 7th. In other words, if you want to run for council or for mayor, and you don't file your paperwork by June 7th, basically in the next two months or so, you won't be on the ballot in November. This June deadline is earlier than it used to be, when it was in August. And for this reason, I think it is appropriate and desirable for me to tell you at this time that I will not file to run for another pair, another term as Prospect's mayor. I will continue to serve in this office to which I was elected until the end of this term, which is December 31st, 2022. By then, I will be 84 and a half years old, will have been mayor for nearly 10 years. I love doing this, and I could see doing it for another year or two, but not for almost another five years, when I would be nearly 89. There's a lot to do between now and the end of December, and I look forward to continuing to address these challenges. In addition to the more routine things, such as trash collection, code enforcement, landscaping, budget preparation, administration, improvements to city wall, this parking lot, parks matters, legal cert matters, et cetera. We have LDG continuing to pursue two extremely large projects, apartment projects on two of our borders, US-42 safety study, and we have the planning and administration of the use of the influx of a large amount of ARPA money. So my purpose here is not to make a swan song. My purpose is just to let every, everybody know before the June 7th cutoff what the situation will be or won't be in November, so that everyone can better plan for the future of Prospect. Are there any questions? There are none, we'll move on to the agenda. The next report is to be from the Forestation Board, and Mr. Tousie is present by Webex. Mr. Tousie.
I'm pleased to start the meeting with a report by saying that I got an email from John Carter saying that our Tree City application recertification has been approved. That's not a surprise because I knew we met all the requirements. But I did want to point out that it reflects the, not only the work of the Forestation Board, but the support of council and the mayor, city maintenance, and others who all work for the city. Otherwise, we wouldn't have it. In the regular report, which has already been mailed out, we note that we did get six canopy tree orders from residents who paid a total $900 to the city. They're listed, there's two different kinds of oaks, Chinese elms, a ginkgo. They'll all be planted within the next few weeks. We're also planning on city land specifically along Southern Farm Road to put in about eight trees. The Officer Timmons Memorial Tree will need to be relocated because of the parking lot expansion. There was some discussion about either replacing or moving the tree, and decision was made to move it, and Andrea was able to cure a favorable cost for relocating the tree by professional arborists. And so far as remediation orders, we just filed three today with Ron requiring five trees to be removed along Riding Ridge, Gunpowder, and Fox Harbor Road. And the Forestation Board will be working on, or is working on to some extent, our annual tree plan, which is required by ordinance. We will submit it at least by the due date of late April. And we got a message from LG&E, you know, they had proposed working along 42 in the area of Southern Farm Road. They say for their own reasons, legal reasons, they have postponed that work and will let us know when they can resume. Any questions?
Yes. Lee, that postponement, I know they were expecting an answer from us about tree removal. Did we ever give that to them, or did we take this postponement to allow us a little more time to think about the situation? How does that stand?
Well, we're somewhere in between. They offered an unspecified amount of money or trees, more trees and money to replace trees that they would be taking out. And I think that's still open. The individual who's in contact with us said it might depend on where we're going to plant the trees. We had discussed with maintenance planting the trees along 42, and the maintenance department rightfully does not want to be responsible for any watering work or any other tree-related maintenance along 42. It's just too dangerous. So very likely, we will take some tree donation from LG&E, plant it elsewhere on city land, probably somewhere in the parks, but also there's other possibilities.
Second question, did they say how long the delay might be?
They did not. They specifically did not.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Lee?
Lee, I was at another meeting, and Cindy Sullivan was talking about Tree City. And one of the things I think she said, if you're a member of Tree City, you get a $30 rebate on any trees planted. Are you aware of that, or have we ever been able to take advantage of that?
No, I never heard that. Who's, who's making this statement, and what organization is this?
Tree City with Cindy Sullivan.
The Tree City organization itself?
No, no.
Or Louisville Trees?
Louisville.
Oh, Trees Louisville, yes. Well, I was certainly aware of, they were offering a $30 rebate. I thought it was all for individuals. In fact, we put in a newsletter article last year encouraging residents to apply for that rebate. Tree City also has a great website that helps people locate trees properly on their property, depending on the specific property and where the resident wants to put the tree or shouldn't put the tree. So it's a great service. And we can check out whether or not we would be eligible for $30 rebates on trees.
Thank you.
All right, if that's it, the one to the Parks and Recreation with Linda Wardell.
Hello. I did submit a written report which indicated that our committee will not meet until Wednesday of this week. So I don't really have any updates from my last month's report, except to announce that we will be having two spring wildflower walks in Harretts Creek Park. And I think I provided that information, but the first one will be Sunday, April 10th at 1:00 p.m. And the second one will be Sunday, April 24th at 1:00 p.m. And we, we now have, what isn't in my report that I submitted, is that we are going to use the Monday following each of those dates as a potential rain date. We decided that most of the people that participate in the wildflower walks are a little bit older, like me, and might be retired and available on a Monday afternoon if it happens to rain on Sunday. And our guide, the Jaclyn McGrail, has been very gracious in saying that she would reserve all four of those dates, so that hopefully we will get two wildflower walks. So again, it's Sunday, April 10th. Rain date is Monday, April 11th. The second one, Sunday, April 24th. Rain date of April 25th. All of them would start at 1:00 p.m. from the Montero Drive Trailhead. Ron has developed a beautiful brochure, a flyer, that I will be posting tomorrow in all of the information kiosk. There it is. Thanks, Ron. And I would also ask John Carter to make sure it's posted on the bulletin board at City Hall. And then I believe that Ron will be distributing that to people that are on the City Mail list, or whatever we call that right now. So I encourage all of you to consider coming to one or both of these walks. The, the flowers change over, you know, from day to day. So just because you come to the first one, you should still plan to come to the second one, because you'll see a different variety of flowers. And Jaclyn is extremely knowledgeable and always provides a wonderful guide. So that's, that's all I have to report. I'm happy to answer questions.
John, I could ask a question. Will we provide an email blast? Linda, do you know, to all citizens, how, how will that go out?
I, I believe that, and Ron can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that Ron plans to send that out. And also, I don't know if there will be a city newsletter before the walks, but if so, he said he could put something in the newsletter as well.
It'll be going out tomorrow.
Okay, thanks, Ron. I hope we do. I went on one, I guess it was a couple of years ago. And frankly, if I can be honest, I, I went because my wife wanted to go, and she's very much into flowers. I didn't think I would enjoy it as much as I did. It's extremely interesting. And there are apps on our cell phones that you can go to, especially like a dummy like me. You can take a picture of the flower if you're on this certain app, and it will tell you what it is and all kinds of information about it, more than you'd ever want to know. And anyway, I just, I think what you're planning is extremely interesting. I think people would really get a lot out of it if they just came and tried it. It's really, really interesting.
Thank you. I agree.
Do you still need volunteers from the city to help?
I, I have asked my committee, and we'll talk about this in our committee meeting this week. Most years, we've had Jaclyn up front, and we've, and Carolyn Embry has been very gracious in sort of bringing up the rear. And Carolyn is also extremely knowledgeable about wildflowers. She is not available this year to participate. I plan to be at both walks. And one of our committee members, Sally Snyder, is also planning to be present at one of, she can't make both of them, but one of them. But I would welcome additional volunteers if anyone's interested. It's mostly just to kind of assist the group. Some people are not comfortable walking from the Montero Drive entrance. It's a little bit steep at front, at the top. And you need to cross a stream on stepping stones. So we are offering the option of those not willing to do that to meet in the parking lot. So I need to have one volunteer in the parking lot and at least one volunteer at the Montero Trailhead. So if there are additional people that are interested in helping out, they can contact me. If you don't have my email or phone, you can call City Hall and they can put you in touch with me.
Linda, is that it?
That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
All right, next we'll get a brief report on the library from Sandra.
Our 14 volunteers, I don't know that they'll all show up. We're having a meeting next week. And we are planning another book sale. I think it's the second weekend in May. Anyway, it's right after Derby. And the other thing that we are slowly doing is going digital. You will be able to download audio and visual books on your smart pad, your cell phone, if you want to, whatever. And we will be breaking that out within the next month. It will, partially what we're going to do is slowly put information out through the newsletter and through other volunteers, so that people can, it's not very difficult to access, but those of us that are older sometimes can use help. Anyway, we have a lot going on up in the library right now. And we'll also take donations, as you know, for the next book sale.
All right, any questions? No, thank you, Sandra. The next item on the agenda is police report. And before he starts, I want to wish him happy anniversary, because he's been here now 10 years.
All shucks. Jeez, I wish I would have brought it better before.
Geez, I wish I would have brought it better before.
This is actually a pretty small one. We did have a record number of house checks last month. You would think February, the shortest day or shortest month, would be low for us, but actually January and February every year are our two highest totals. And we had almost forty-four hundred house checks for the month. And I remember early on, ten years ago, we would have twelve hundred, sixteen hundred and sometimes like nine hundred for a month. So it's, people are really taking advantage of that program. Very few reports for the month. That's good. Everything was slow in that aspect. The few reports that we had are really insignificant, nothing that required much follow-up or anything. So we're good in that sense. We had a few arrests for the month. There were a few DUIs. There's a third one that's reported as a DUI. It wasn't. It was an alcohol intoxication. Apparently Jill was intoxicated when she filled out the report because she got it confused with a DUI. Now I have to straighten out the state report. We have to file a report every month with the state on the number of DUIs we have. Now I've got to go up and tell them it's two, not three. Thanks, Jill. Let's see, code enforcement, Rick had a, has a pretty busy month. And a lot of it is related to the breakers just from the sheer number of houses that are now under construction. And one of the odd things are the number of lots that are being consolidated. That people are buying two and three lots now and consolidating. And there was one lady that bought three lots to put one house in the middle of it. So now I'm thinking we need to call the fire department because some people have more money to burn. I mean, that's incredible. What did they start with, like sixty-nine, seventy lots?
Yes.
But we're not going to have sixty-nine or seventy.
Well, I knew a couple of them had done two, but I didn't know anybody.
There's three now that have multiple lots for one dwelling. Somebody bought an extra lot to put in a swimming pool. That's a lot of money for a.
That cuts down on our tax base. I haven't read it on a lot.
Maybe not. That house will be worth a lot of money.
Yeah, so I guess we need to start turning down all this.
Yeah, it can't cut on the tax base if it's not on the records yet. So if anything, it's, there's still only an increase there.
Okay. All right, but he stays busy and had fifteen more permits for the month. And so he continues to do a great job for us. Other than that, again, there's nothing to report on our stuff. However, I think within the last few days, there's some stuff that has come out on the Nextdoor app that refers to a burglary in Prospect. It did not occur on our jurisdiction. It's over in Oldham County. It was off of, in the Fox Metal section there in Oldham County side. And I think they've put out a picture. I haven't seen it on the app, but somebody had sent me the actual picture of an individual that broke into a home in Oldham County. And, but it was not on one of the streets that's on us. And so anyway, we do have a photograph of the individual that was involved in it. There is a similarity to the one burglary that we had a month or so ago over in Sutherland. However, the photo does not match the suspects that we had or the ones that had hit everywhere else. Although the MO is sort of similar, so I don't know whether somebody's picking up on that or it's just simply a coincidence. But the photos of the suspects don't match in any way. So that's all I have for that. If anybody has any questions.
Like, how did we keep this guy for ten years or what?
We've been lucky. We've been lucky. Next item on the agenda, unfinished business. Says second reading of ordinance six fourteen, twenty twenty-two, an ordinance amending the budget to the General Fund of the City of Prospect for the fiscal year, beginning July one, twenty twenty-one, ending June thirty, twenty twenty-two. If there is a motion and a second to adopt that, then we can get into discussion. If not, then we don't do anything. So is there such a motion?
Make a motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there a discussion?
Actually, the discussion I've got is not different from what I said before. I understand that we've got more money. I don't understand why we are putting it into categories when some of us sitting at this table have absolutely no idea what the things are going to be spent on. Right now, this is putting a hundred and three thousand, four hundred dollars into capital outlay. I don't know what that's going to involve. Into thems for thirty-five thousand dollars, I don't know what that is. And into parks maintenance, which already has a bearing of half a million dollars. We're putting another roughly two hundred thousand in there. And again, there are those sitting at the table, I'm included, who have no idea where this money is going to get spent.
Well, Jeff can tell you about the hundred and three thousand, four hundred for the police or I can. Do you want to, Jeff?
Ninety-one thousand is for the update for the operating of the radio system. If you ever been peaceful or in Indiana, they change out the weapons. Weapons were all on the place.
Hey, chief, you'll have to come up to the microphone for the citizens. But one thing while you walk up, I will say that you did it. The city did explain the hundred and three thousand, four hundred in the last recorded meeting along with the thirty-five thousand. I still think it's worth, chief, for you to mention exactly what those specifics are because we didn't hear from you. But it's a little bit of a far cry to say nobody knew what those were. But it is on the recorded meeting from last time.
Okay, I apologize for that. I turned my microphone off after I finished my last spiel. Yeah, ninety-one thousand. It's on now, I believe, correct?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, it was ninety-one thousand and a little bit, I don't have it in front of me, for the upgrade of the radio system, which is required because we will no longer be able to communicate with Louisville Metro Police. They have already bought all of their radios or are in the process of having their radios with, and it has an encryption on there. And so we have to buy radios that have the same encryption so we can talk to one another. That's why we had to do it. All of the other agencies around here have all done the same thing. That's ninety-one thousand and a little bit of change. The other, the additional twelve thousand is for, to upgrade the weapons for the police officers, their sidearms.
Do we buy our police officer's sidearms?
Yeah, well, we issue them to them and then when they leave, they check them back in and then we put them in a safe.
One of the discussions was that Metro did not do that. And I thought that was amazing that Metro was expecting police to provide their own sidearms.
Well, you know, they've gone back and forth with that over the years. At the time that I worked at Louisville Metro for the Training Department in two thousand and three, Metro provided the weapons at that time. And then since then, they allot money. They put it in a, you know, you get a weapon, you get a uniform and equipment allowance per year. So they actually give you money, additional money to buy your own weapons and stuff like that. So they don't furnish the gun, but they give you the money to buy the gun.
Do they specify the gun that you have?
You are given parameters. There are only certain weapons that are approved.
And what about the two hundred thousand dollars then in parks maintenance?
That's not me.
Tell us, Jeff.
You probably know.
The original allocation of two ninety-one, five covers of variety of Sims. Linda could chime in on some of that. Two hundred, thereabouts, was for Little Hunting Creek Park. The additional one eighty-eight and change also is for Little Hunting Creek Park. Make that close to four hundred thousand dollars for Little Hunting Creek Park and the rest of it for other parks and areas.
And I recall that's been previously discussed with the specific question being asked about the building and the cost of it.
Okay, so all of the parks maintenance money except for roughly eighty thousand dollars is for Little Hunting Creek Park?
Before we get too far into this, I have a real concern relative to the legality of the format of this amendment. And I have the same concern about the amendments coming up later. The statute is very specific about how a, an amendment must be presented. It calls for strike-throughs. It calls for underlining. And we don't have this here, nor do we have it in the one that's farther down on the agenda. And I question the legality, even if we approve it, regardless of what you think about it. Chris, is Chris?
Yeah, I'm here and you may very well be right. I know that the last time this came up, which was about a year ago, before John Carter came on board, I had sent that to Laura and I think we had complied with that. I think it's my fault for not bringing John up to date. And I guess we need to bear that in mind and do it that way, Frank. Thank you very much for catching it.
Do we, do we need to go back to a first reading on this budget amendment?
I don't think you do because it's not a substantive change. What you're doing is, wait a minute, are you talking about the underlining or are you talking about the?
I'm talking about the underlining, understoring and the strike-throughs.
I think on that, yes. No, on the underlining and the strike-throughs, I do not think you need to. I don't, that's a substantive change. I think that's just to make it easier for the person who's reading it to read it and find out what you're doing.
But it's also a state law.
Yeah, it's very specific. I mean, it's not an arbitrary thing. You can't use different fonts or different colors. I mean, they're very specific relative to strike-throughs and underlines.
Frank, I'm agreeing with you. I understand that. I understand that.
Chris, would there be substantial compliance since all that information is provided? It says provided in columns instead of underlining and strike-throughs?
No, I think you have to comply with the statute. I think you have to do it exactly like they set forth in the statute. And again, I had given that to her about a year ago when Frank brought it up and it's my fault for not giving it to John.
So just to bring it full circle, Chris, it is not a substantive change. Therefore, it will be corrected, but it has no bearing on what happens today.
No, I think you need to, I think the first reading's okay, but I think you need to change it before you have the second reading. Sorry, but that's what I think. I didn't catch that and I think Frank is correct on that.
Well, having heard from the city attorney on Frank's objection, I think we are done with that item for tonight. I don't have any disagreement. Next item on the agenda is the application from American Tower Corporation for building permit and waiver to allow for a cell tower collection project at eighty-nine oh five U S Highway forty-two to exceed one-ten, one-hundred-ten feet.
The applicant person?
Well, I'll come back to that.
Okay.
Because I don't want to have to read this.
That's what makes sense.
To exceed a hundred and tenth feet in height to a maximum height of a hundred and thirty feet. How do we proceed on that?
You know, no. Kristen Swenson is here to answer any questions.
Do you need a motion, John, to accept it?
If there are any questions, John Carter tells me someone's here to answer them. I know. It's Kristen Swenson.
Must be this gentleman right here.
That's the name on the report.
Correct.
Are there any questions for? Man or woman?
Woman.
I'm here. This is Kristen Swenson.
There any questions for her?
I have a question. It says that the cell tire will extend, the way I read it, the current cell tire eighteen feet. And on one of the waivers, Commissioner Carlson said he would like to see the old tire removed if this extension is granted. Is, are you going to take the tire down and put up a new one? Or are you going to extend the height of the existing tire?
My project manager, Alyssa Howard, is here to speak on that. But we are looking to extend an existing tower. This is a separate tower than the one that they were referencing on top of the fire department.
Okay. There are two?
There are two towers, yes.
Where is the second?
My understanding is that it's on top of your fire department. It, I believe it's your emergency services tower and it's a smaller tower.
But that isn't the one you're extending. Is that correct?
Correct.
You're extending the one in back of the firehouse?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, anybody want to make a motion?
I move we accept the extension. I think it's an asset to the community. More reliable to us.
Frank moves the approval and Greg Gilzman moves seconds that motion. Any further discussion? Not will ask for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's approved. Now we go back to the first pair. It's an application from resident Brian Pennell for a building permit and waive from Prospect Ordinance Title fifteen and usage section one oh five point two E to allow for the construction of a detached garage at ninety-seven twenty U S Highway forty-two. Is he here? I think I can see him.
I don't know. Was he on the phone?
Hello, I'm not sure if you can hear me. This is Brian Pennell.
We can hear you.
Yeah, we hear you.
Okay, apologize for not being there in person. I'm the second of three apparently soccer games I got to attend today for my kids. So I would have rather have been there. Please, if you have any questions, I'm definitely here to answer.
Just one question. At one point in time in discussing this, I believe that people ask what your neighbors think of this. And I wondered if you've talked to them and what their answers were.
Yeah, sure. So the neighbors to the east are the, the judge, the Corey's, the judges. They were fully in favor of a detached garage. They have, they have one there themselves. The neighbor to my, to the west is very similar to our property. It's close to five acres. They had two horses when we moved in. They have a horse barn and a separate detached garage besides that. The owners at the time, that when we talked to them, there wasn't an issue. They, they understand the reasons why a larger property like that, we would want to have a little more space in storage area. So no objections then in face-to-face contact and talking with them, but that we've ever heard, so.
Any other, any other questions? Any further questions?
I move approval.
I second.
We've been seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none.
Thank you very much.
Wait, wait, we will come to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And it's been approved.
Congratulations on your retirement from the Navy.
Well, thank you for that as well. It was, it was a nice, nice 20 years for us. Thank you for, and thank you for your time tonight.
Enjoy your soccer games.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
Are you done? Resolution 1-22, 2022. This is a resolution of adoption of the Kentucky Regional Planning and Development Agency, KPTA, Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. I asked whether everybody had gotten a copy of that plan, and I was told that they had. So I'll leave it to the council to decide they want to adopt that resolution.
I asked for the plan at the last meeting, and we were provided links, I think from John Carter. And I've looked at it, and I won't begin to tell you. I totally understand it, but it looks like we needed to adopt.
I don't think we can the option to. So I move that we adopt.
Second.
I second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion of that? We'll ask for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That resolution is adopted. Next, we have resolution 3-2022, authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with KPTA for the administration of the American Rescue Plan Act funds allocated to the city. I would note that we already voted to do that, but apparently they need a resolution. So that's why that's here tonight.
Move to accept.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Bearing none, we will ask for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And that resolution also is adopted. So we have one more item on the agenda, and that is a first reading, ordinance 615-2022, amending Prospect Ordinance Title 3, administering blah, 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 to increase council members' monthly compensation to $250.
John?
That was, yes.
That's also inappropriate to bring to the table because of format.
Correct.
Chris, is that right? Well, Chris agreed with you before.
I agree.
Can Chris hear us or receive?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I, I'd like to say a couple of things on that. And I, I want to just ask for your all's common courtesy. I know last week in front of, or the last meeting in front of a lot of outsiders, we had about five minutes of questions on the minutes. And then this week, we, we have this issue. Come on, guys, you, you, you get these minutes and you get these documents the Wednesday before the meeting. You know my phone number. You know John Carter's phone number. Just please give us a call. It's not necessary really to go through this and delay everything a month, if you just please do that. That's all I got to say on that. Thank you.
Yeah, so that one is going to have to lay over and get corrected as well, is what I understand. Without any further discussion about that, I think we have come to comments from citizens, if there are any. Mr. Holmes?
Just wanted to comment as a citizen on the mayor's announcement tonight that he's not going to run for mayor in the upcoming election and thank him for his long service as mayor with the city of Prospect and implore him to consider ways that he can continue to be involved in the Prospect City government so that the city of Prospect does not lose his experience, his knowledge, and his leadership. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for saying it, Senator. As I said before, David, got nine more months in this term, so I'm not going to be here for that long.
I think all of us in the room hope that we will live longer than just nine months. So we hope that you will be able to contribute.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Can I, can I ask a question? Mr. Long and Ms. Stoller here, or were they trying to speak?
Who?
Mr. Long and Ms. Stoller are in. I'm not sure if they just moseyed into the Prospect City Council meeting if they were here for a purpose. I just wanted to ask.
Well, they told me they were going to send an invoice, but that's all I know.
Well.
We've done that too. Now, we received a Zoom invitation from the city. And so we were here in case you had any questions or anything from us. And if not, that's all fine too. I do want to say this on behalf of Sarah and myself. We really enjoyed our time with you. I hope that it was well spent for, for you all, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ted. All right, we have a motion to adjourn, and it's been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Adjourn.